Present for the committee this evening, our councilors Gamache, Gould, Manning-Martin, and Turco, and myself, Councilor McGinn as Chair. Also present, our councilors Welton, Peach, Daigle, Higgins, and Rosignol. We have two items on the agenda this evening: Authorization assigned purchase and sale agreement, and bond order for multiple Rusolo properties, and a transfer of funds for the south and west school roofs in an amount of $75,000. I'm going to proceed with the first item. Just want to mention that with respect to this meeting, it's a public meeting, but not a public hearing. As Chair, I have the discretion to allow public comment, and I will exercise that discretion this evening and accept any member of the public that's here, present this evening, or via Zoom that wants to speak on this matter, can do so after we hear the presentation from his honor of the Mayor, and before we go to the committee. With that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you. Good evening, councilors. Hope everybody's doing well. Very happy to be here with all of you tonight for, I think, a very important, historic, potential purchase for the city of PBD. And, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'd like to first start off with the video that I put together and put on YouTube to try to give some further detail about this proposal. I wanted to ask if we could start with that, and then I can fill in with some additional comments thereafter.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. Just one administrative matter. If I could get a motion from the committee member to receive item 7B from the regular meeting package. You heard the 7B.
7B, so move.
You heard the motion from Councilor Gamache. Councilor Manning-Martin is remote this evening, so we need to take roll call votes on all of these motions. Roll call.
Councilor Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
So if it's okay, Mr. President, I'd like to, it's about a seven, eight-minute video. I wanted to ask if that could be played now, and then I can follow up after.
Go right ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, I'm Mayor Ted Bettencourt. I am very happy to report that the city has reached an agreement to purchase over 164 acres of open space from Rusolo PBD for $25 million. I believe this acquisition represents a unique opportunity, maybe even a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, to help meet some immediate and long-term needs of our city. You may recall in late 2023, Rusolo announced plans to close their plant. At the time, Rusolo was the largest property owner in the city with nearly 350 acres. Their property is divided into basically three large components. The first one is the golf course, which I will speak to shortly. The second is where the actual factories are, which is not part of the sale. The third, which I'm proposing we purchase, is the nearly 165 acres of open space and water resources. There are three primary benefits to consider with this purchase. First, the Rusolo land includes significant freshwater well sources that helped fuel factory production in our city for over 200 years. With the proper infrastructure in place, these same wells could provide PBD residents with millions of gallons of additional drinking water. There may also be an opportunity to generate new revenue by providing water to our neighboring cities and towns. You may remember in 2020, we embarked on a four-phase, $32 million project to modernize PBD's water treatment and distribution system. The Clean and Sustainable Water Future Project enabled us to continue utilizing our own natural resources, producing our own water, and controlling our own water rates. Similar to that project, the Rusolo land purchase builds on our existing water resources while helping us maintain control of our future water production and distribution, and lessening our city's reliance on very expensive MWR water. After experiencing two severe droughts in the past three years alone, the importance of having an ample supply of fresh water is more pressing than ever. Second, the purchase also enables the city to preserve this land as open space in perpetuity. Coupled with our purchase in 2023 of 80 acres of open space adjacent to 80 Granite Street, and the 2024 purchase of 135 acres of open space for the PBD at Meadow Golf Course, the city will have purchased and preserved nearly 400 acres of open space in the past two years. And third, the Rusolo purchase will help lessen the frequency and severity of flooding during major weather events. As you will see, much of the land the city acquires from Rusolo includes the Goldthwait Brook watershed, which is a contributing factor to flooding in several key areas of the city. With that acreage under city control, we can take steps to alleviate flooding, similar to what we did in 2014 when we built a scouting way woods retention basin. I wanted to provide some visuals of the land that we were going to be purchasing. I'm standing right now in a spot I'm pretty sure nobody has ever stood before in the history of the city of PBD, but this gives a good perspective of some of the land that we're purchasing. There are 10 different parcels under our city assessor's records that we're purchasing from Rusolo PBD. This is one of the biggest ones, maybe even the largest. This is about 70 acres up behind me, and it goes a pretty far distance. This is actually part of the water source. A number of the wells in this purchase come from this particular area, and it's covered up right now with snow and ice, but it gives you some perspective of all the water that's back here in the wetlands. To give you some perspective, if you just kept going forward that way behind me, you'd come across the land on Summit Street, Christian Book Distributors up behind me that way. Over to my right, there'd be Linfield Street, Land and Sea, Wardhurst over to my right here, and up to my left is the Higgins Middle School and the location of our PBD police station. This would be a primary water source for us in the future, to help our residents, to help our community, and I wanted to give you a visual of what we're looking at. This is another visual I wanted to provide. I'm at the spot, and many PBD people will fondly remember this place. This is the site of the world-famous War II family carnival that took place in PBD for many years. I was a young boy with my family coming here and had some great memories. But this site is on Washington Street. In front of me is Washington Street. Coming along to the left is Allen's Lane, which leads to the police station and to the Higgins Middle School, and of course, that is the Rusolo factory site. Again, the factory site is not part of this transaction. This would be the field here and the land up behind me, as well as a couple of other locations. Behind me is the water. I know it can't be seen from this site, but it is back there, and this land would be a part of the purchase that we would make. I think this provides tremendous opportunity for the city of PBD in a number of ways, with open space, all kinds of opportunities to utilize the open space. Most prominently would be the purchase of water, which would be tremendous for our city, meeting our needs now, but in the future. And even behind us is the train track that could be utilized in some way by the city of PBD that could be helpful in the long-range planning. This is something, I think, again, that could really benefit the city, our businesses, and our whole community for really many generations to come. This is another visual that I wanted to provide, and this is an area I don't think many people from PBD have seen before. To give you some perspective, we have over to my right, Linfield Street is a short distance away. Over kind of behind me, you can see the back end of the Tregian PBD YMCA up behind me to my right, and we have a great deal of water resources here that you can see. It's all iced up and snowed up right now, but it gives you a sense of the water, and I can tell you the water goes significantly far back this way. Over to my left is the Centennial Park. The access here is first half, again, to give you some perspective of where we're at. But this is an opportunity, again, to buy some water. That could be great for our city's future. Down this path here, this will all be part of the purchase, and this path would eventually lead over to Crestview Park, a great PBD neighborhood, and that would provide some opportunities for recreational trail, maybe a walking path over in this particular area. To give you some perspective also, this is right where Goldthwait Brook is. Comes out of Cedar Pond, which is back behind me to my left, kind of actually comes right underneath me. Daylight's over here again, and kind of rolls all the way down to PBD Square, Foster Street, kind of parallel to Linfield Street. And it's been the source of some troubles over the years in terms of water. Quail and Robin Road neighborhood, Chief among them, some other Linfield Street neighborhoods that get hit from water time to time. We've done an excellent job over the years in handling water events much better than we used to, primarily because of the scouting way retention basin that we built behind the Higgins Middle School that's been able to hold water that typically flows down the Goldthwait Brook, flows from Centennial Park. We're able to collect it there rather than going down to PBD Square. I believe this is a great opportunity for the city of PBD, really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, to be able to purchase this amount of land, to be able to purchase water rights that we'd be able to use for our residents now and in the future, really something that meets our short-term needs, considering the droughts that we've had in recent years, but also, very importantly, doing some long-range planning for our future, for our children, grandchildren. This is an opportunity to really set the city up and meet its needs for generations to come, and I'm really excited about that. I'm going to be going to the city council on January 23rd. Please, if you have any questions, reach out to me, reach out to some city councilors if you're looking for some information, but I'm really excited about moving this forward and taking this step.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Council for allowing me to play that video. I just didn't want to repeat some of the things that were in that video, and I wanted, I know a number of you know those areas well, but I wanted to provide some visuals as well for all of you. I'm joined today by our, some of our members of our team. We have Kurt Belavance, our Community Development Director, Will Politz, our Director of Public Services, Mike Gingras, our Finance Director, and Don Kahn, our City Solicitor, certainly available to answer any questions. Not to repeat myself, there's just a few things that I did want to touch on, again, to reiterate. We were notified in early 2023 of Rusolo's closing of their plant. We immediately began meeting with them. A number of our administrative team, as well as Councilor McGinn, Councilor Daigle, were able to join those meetings as well, as we met with representatives from Rusolo to talk through their timeline, talk through their plans, to get an understanding of what they were looking at. There are three major parcels of land that Rusolo owned totaling about 350 acres. Again, they were the largest property owner at the time in the city of PBD, and we bid purchase the first one, which was the golf course, about 135 acres. You may recall, they owned about the first nine holes of the Meadows Golf Course. We were able to purchase that, secure now their golf course ownership for generations to come, as well as some additional open space in that area, and set us up very nicely for the future, I think, there. The second major parcel is where the factories are, 44 acres approximately, and that is not a part of this sale. And then the third is the 165 acres, which are outlined in that video, primarily in two spots. One off of Washington Street, off of Allen's Lane, up behind the police station, the old carnival site back there is about five parcels, and then another five parcels are over near Cedar Pond up behind the YMCA. So it's a total of 10 parcels we'd be purchasing totaling just under 165 acres. There are three major reasons why I think this is an important investment and a great investment for our city and its future. The first is the water permits. So the land itself, there's certainly value to that, but a lot of that land is wetlands. It's not really developable. There are some areas that would be developable, but primarily it's not developable land. So the value is not so much in the land, the value is in the water rights. There was an active water management permit that Rusolo has had for decades that we would be purchasing from them to allow us to use the water. They use the water for industrial uses. We would certainly be looking to use that water for drinking water for the citizens of PBD into the future. As mentioned, we've had two droughts in the last three years. It's hard to really overemphasize the importance of water to supply to the community. So much is based on water production here in the city of PBD and across the world. To have access to water that we have as part of our natural resources is something that's very special, and in some ways particular to the city of PBD, certainly locally. So it's a wonderful asset. We right now have two active water treatment plants, as all of you know, and I want to give a little bit of an understanding of how our water production works. We have, on average, we need about 5.1 million gallons a day of water. We have two active plants, the one on Winona Street, the Winona Water Treatment Plant in West PBD, and then also the Walsh Treatment Plant over on Cooley Street in South PBD. To give you some idea, we need 5.1 on average. Probably today, we used about 5.1 million gallons of water. When we get to the summer and it's peak months, we need about 11. People are watering their lawns, pools, washing their cars. The needs are much higher during those summer peak months. We need about 11 million gallons of water per day. So 5.1 on average during the winter months, and then it fluctuates up to 11. Right now, at the Walsh Water Treatment Plant, when we're at full operation, we can get about 3.5 to 4 million gallons a day. The Winona Water Treatment Plant, we can get maybe 2.5 to 3. So it's about 7 on, when everything's in full operation, somewhere between 6 and 7 we can get per day to meet those peak hour and peak month needs. The remainder that we would need, we get from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWRA. And of course, all of you know, the MWRA water is significantly higher than the city of PBD. So to be able to get a permit that is active right now for Rusolo, which allows up to 3.34 million gallons of water per day, would be of a significant help to us to meet our needs during those peak months. We still would need some reliance, we would still have some reliance on MWRA water to meet those peak months of 11, but this would be a significant step towards that to, again, lessen our reliance on MWRA, utilize our own water resources that we have in the city that a lot of other communities do not have, where we control the treatment, we can control distribution, and most importantly, we control our water rates moving forward to give us control over the cost of water here in the city. This is not a turnkey operation. This wouldn't be something that if we closed in a few months, that we'd be able to turn this water into drinkable water right away. There would be some infrastructure needs. There'd be some different options that we're going to be able to look at in the future, how to meet those needs, but they would require additional funding in the future in order to do the infrastructure work, in order to make that happen. But this is, I do believe, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to purchase water, an active permit, and make it our own, and really set ourselves up nicely going forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is our water that we get from the Winona Pond at the Winona Treatment Plant in West PBD, that comes from the Ipswich River watershed. And you may know the Ipswich River watershed is heavily used, overused, and is a stressed watershed area at the moment. There's concerns of its future going forward. I know the State House has a number of committees meeting on this, and it's a regular topic of discussions in the environmental and water world. This particular watershed area is not part of the Ipswich River watershed. It is part of the North Coastal Basin, where there's a significant amount of water there and available to the city of PBD. It's been described to me, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on this, from Weston Sampson, our representative, that it's quality water and water of great quantity, which is terrific news, and certainly, again, something that's very valuable for us in the future. Second important part of this transaction would be continue our efforts to bring open space to the city of PBD, that we can use potentially in the future for recreational opportunities, or just having it as open space in the future. And again, I think this is something that we should all be very proud of as a group, and this has been all of you and my office. We've been able to purchase, if we've moved forward with this transaction, over almost 400 acres of open space here in the city, and I think that's something to be very proud of. And the third part, and I don't think it's touched on enough, is the flood mitigation, water management piece that this would be, that this purchase would help us with into the future. This water, as mentioned in the video, is primarily, or is a large part, Goldthwait Brook. And Goldthwait Brook is a very large water source that comes from Cedar Pond all the way down Linfield Street, kind of goes through Centennial Park, kind of brings itself over and eventually to Foster Street over near Champions Pub. It's been a major source of the water problems that have occurred in the city for decades, for centuries, in fact, if you go back, that the Goldthwait Brook has been a primary factor in all of that. As mentioned, we have done a great job handling water much better than we have in years past. We've been able to reduce flooding events and have done a much better job overall as a city in terms of handling storm events and flooding events that have happened, and in a large part is because of the scouting woods retention basin that we built behind the Higgins Middle School. And it was built at that particular spot to kind of collect a lot of the water that flows from Goldthwait Brook, that flows from Centennial Park down into the area that typically went downtown, is now being held there and distributed very slowly at certain times. This purchase would allow us also to control the water, additional water that flows down that area, and when there's major storm events coming that we're aware of, we would be able to divert the water to our golf course, divert the water to other locations in the city, again, planning ahead so that we can avoid future problems with our downtown. So there's another important piece to this, and this is a benefit we can get immediately. The benefit of the water will take some time. The benefit of potentially diverting water to other locations during storm events is something that we'd be able to do pretty quickly. So those are three major reasons why I think this purchase is important for the city, and I'm excited to bring it forward to you. Our partner on this has been Weston Sampson. I think all of you are familiar with Weston Sampson. They've been our water consultant in the city for decades and decades. They know our systems well, and we went to them to seek an analysis of the quality of water, of the potential cost to make that water available to us, that we could bring it to tap, and to get a sense of just costs in general. I supplied that report to you. The water is of good quality, and there is also a great financial benefit moving forward. Again, it's going to, would take some time and further investment, but there's great financial benefit by doing this ourselves. And a lot of those numbers that you saw in that report do not include grants that we'd be able to get, that I think we'd have an excellent chance at, as well as particular funding that's available for water-type projects. You may recall that we were able to get SRF funding, state revolving fund, funding for our water project that we did in the city of PBD, which was at extremely low interest rate. So there's other advantages in terms of doing water type of projects. I wanted to make sure that was provided to you and certainly available to answer any questions on that. I'm asking today to move forward with the authorization to allow me to sign the purchase and sale agreement and move forward with our bond order and move, for $25 million, to purchase this water and land and to do the necessary documents in order to move forward with the sale. However, there's a great deal that has to take place before we get to that point of the actual closing and the actual purchase. Purchase and sale agreement really commences what's called the due diligence period. The due diligence period is our opportunity to investigate, to research, to do all the testing that we need to do to make sure that we are buying what we want, what we are buying fits in with the plans that we have for that area. So a number of people have reached out regarding the quality of the water, the quality of the land, potential contamination. That starts now. That's the work that we're going to be doing moving forward before we ever close on this project. It wouldn't be responsible for us to not do the testing that's required before we purchase something. It's in all purchase and sale agreements, and I'm going to give you right now the specific in the draft agreement, and you have a draft agreement. That's not the final agreement. The agreement is still being negotiated, and that'll take some time, but I wanted to provide this, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you. This is page four of the purchase and sale agreement draft. The specific item that I want to turn your attention to is 5.1.9.
Can I get a motion to receive?
So move.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote.
This is the important provision. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We have a remote participant, so we need to do a roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Turco.
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, this, it says page six, Mary. Did you mean to say page six? Page six, okay. Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash. Manning Martin.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to provide this document about halfway down, provision 5.1.9. That is a provision that allows us the opportunity to walk away from the sale. Right now, we are doing a Phase One environmental testing at the site. We'll be getting a report on that shortly. There might be the need for additional testing that we would be required or should do, but that'll be determined over the next couple of few weeks. But if the reports come back and they are not to our liking, and they are not what we thought they were, and there's concerns and questions and all of that, this provision allows us the opportunity to walk away from the transaction without any further costs. So, the testing, the research, the investigation, we have the title examinations, all of that work now commences once we move forward with the purchase and sale agreement and sign an actual contract. But there's language in here, opt-out language, that allows us, again, if this doesn't fit with what we want it for, and we have concerns or questions about the quality of water, about the land, whatever the concern may be, we have the full opportunity and legal right to walk away from the transaction. There's a lot to be taking, there's a lot that's going to take place over the next few months that are going to determine if this is the right purchase for us. What I need from you is just the movement forward, that we want to move forward with this transaction, the price of $25 million, and then we move forward with the work over the next few months to make sure that this is what we want it to be and what we believe it to be. And again, it would not be responsible for us collectively to move forward, or anybody in any type of purchase of land or property without doing their due diligence, and that begins now. So I wanted to make sure that was very clear. That's something that is really a part of every purchase and sale agreement. It's the opportunities for the buyer and even the seller to walk away if it's not, if the agreement is not what they expect it to be. The closing date will be determined, that'll be negotiated as well, but we need to make sure we have all the information and all the reports from Weston Sampson that we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the city. And like we've done with every other purchase we've done as a city, when we've purchased open space, a number of different parcels that we've purchased over on Main Street, the purchases that I mentioned earlier, the open space for the Meadows Golf Course, the DiBiase property, those 80 acres. There was all due diligence period where we did examinations and we did reports and we did our research and our due diligence to make sure these properties made sense for us. So, that begins now. That's what I'd be seeking approval on, and there's a lot more work ahead of us. But again, I think this is a great opportunity. I could speak at length and continue to speak about different aspects of this and certainly available to answer any questions. City team here is available to answer any questions as well. But I think this is a momentous moment for the city to really do something that sets our city up very nicely for generations to come. I don't think many communities have had this opportunity to buy 14 wells of quality water with a large quantity available for the future of the city of Peabody, and I think that's something that, again, is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that I think we really need to move forward with, as well as the other benefits that are going to derive from this purchase. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you and, again, available and happy to answer any questions moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hold for one moment, I need to clarify something with the clerk. So, I mentioned earlier, we're going to allow public comment. I know there is some individual, at least an individual, that wants to make public comment. We had an issue with the link that was distributed. That's now been rectified on the city website, but there's a caveat to that, and I'm going to have the clerk please explain that.
So the link that is running on PATV for people to attend via Zoom is correct. The link that is on the city's website has been updated. So, to anyone who's watching, using the Zoom webinar feature, the ID number is 880-7496-5396. So if you'd like to attend the meeting and speak, you can speak that way, but you can also go on the city's website, it has been updated. Thank you.
Please just repeat that ID number again, just so people have a chance to write that down.
Sure. The webinar ID number is 880-7496-5396.
Thank you. With that, is there anyone here that would like to be heard on this matter? Anybody in the auditorium this evening that would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to be heard? The clerk tells me not yet, so we're going to come, we're going to come back to that. I know I said we'd go to public comment first, but given this little technical issue, I'll come back to it in a few moments. So I'm going to hear from the committee and start with Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Everyone being here for this eventful evening of future prospects for the city of Peabody. Mr. Mayor, I commend you for having the vision and seeing it through and making this happen. I grew up Cedar Pond area. I'm 70, almost 70 years old, and there was water everywhere, and there's still water everywhere. It's not going away. So we'll have an opportunity to use a natural resource that people go to war over, and we'll have, we'll have the opportunity to take care of our residents with the water supply. I commend you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, I think you're going to hear a lot of that, those same sentiments tonight. You know, you and I have talked, as you've done an incredible job with the media blitz and getting this out to the residents as best you could, so there really isn't a lot to ask because you've already clarified and explained everything that you possibly could. With that being said, you know, there's times when, as an elected official, you get to do something that you know is a great thing for your community, and, you know, you may not see the fruits of it in the immediate, but I know that they'll be there in the future, and this was well thought out. It's a great move, in my opinion, for the city of Peabody, and it's something that people will look back and say was an excellent decision by this administration. So I thank you for that. Very briefly, on that, you mentioned the 3.3 million gallon permit. Can we expand on that permit? Is that, can you ask for more water usage on the current permit that we would be purchasing?
That's a good question, and that would require an investigation by the DEP to determine if we could add to that. It's been 3.34 for decades now. They haven't been using it at its peak back many years ago, when it was Eastman, Kodak, Eastman, Jellet and Kodak, they were using those type of water numbers. The permit hasn't been used to that, to that degree in a number of years, but the act of, is still an active 3.34. To go beyond that, I don't know the process, but it would be something we have to bring forward to the DEP.
Okay, and I know it's very early in the process, and I know that, you know, again, you've mentioned this publicly, that there'll be additional work needed. Do we have any rough estimates of what it would take to get some water online? You know, that's a difficult question, but I'll ask it anyway.
It is a difficult question. We've gotten some ballpark numbers, but that would require some additional research and investigation by Weston Sampson to determine how we could go about utilizing, or putting the infrastructure in place to utilize the water in the future. There's potential of a water treatment plant, which can be expensive to put in that location. There also may be the opportunity with some, some infrastructure investment and some upgrades at the Walsh Treatment Plant at Cooley Street that we could potentially tie into that water treatment plant. So those are going to be options that we're going to have to look at and try to determine pricing for and what makes sense for us.
Thank you, Mayor. And the last thing I'll ask is just regarding the areas you mentioned with, you know, Goldwate Brook, Linfield Street, the Quail Road area, Cedar Pond. You know, we've had a couple of issues over the last, since Rusolo's closed down. I don't know if it's related to the closure of Rusolo or just bad luck, but I think it's a maintenance issue that we're going to take on, and I know that there are some residents that are concerned about maintenance of those areas in the meantime until we begin using some of that water. So, has there been a discussion with Mr. Pauls from DPS about, instead of being reactive, a little bit more proactive with some of those areas, so that we don't subject those people to flooding upstream?
That's a good point, because I don't think there's been much maintenance and care to those areas over the last number of years, as the operation has wound down over at Rusolo. So, yes, I think there's going to be requirements for us to do some maintenance over in that area, put up some fencing, and yes, I think it's, it will require us to do something, but it's also work that I think will have a benefit in terms of handling water, flood mitigation events, and really be able to get at some of these core issues that have affected the city in its handling of water over the years.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to end on a positive note, again, I just want to reiterate, thank you. This is, this is an incredible moment for the city of Peabody, and I'm glad to be part of it. And, you know, I think it's a no-lose for the city, whether this, you know, obviously we're all hopeful this turns out to be potable water for the city. I think ultimately, there's always going to be a use for water, it's a commodity. If it's not this use, there'll be another use, so I don't believe the city is at any risk here at all. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Counselor Melville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, like you, I did have some folks in that area reach out to me, somebody that lives in that area, myself, reach out about, you know, possible contamina, worries about contamination and the rest. So, I think your plan and your response of the due diligence period after the purchase and sale agreement is appropriate and makes total sense. I had an opportunity to walk portions of this area. I'm very familiar with it, obviously not, didn't walk the whole thing, but, you know, it's interesting, on Allen's Lane, there is a section that, you know, you can kind of walk past it, but it's the golf course irrigation project, some mechanical stuff, there's some mechanical things there. Now, my question is, what kind of impact, I know we're not purchasing the factory area, which I would agree with, what impact on is the sale of that area, the actual factory itself have on any sort of distribution process that we might have? Should we move forward with, you know, actually building something and building out so we can actually use the water that we're purchasing?
Thank you, Counselor. Another important question to ask. So we, in our discussions, and they've been very regular, our discussions with the Rusolo team, the brokers that are handling the sale of the factory site, the bids that came in, and there were a number of bidders on that property, none of them were water users. So they were purchasing the property for the use of that actual site itself. They were not reliant or hopeful of using water in the future. So in terms of the potential buyer coming in for the factory site, this doesn't affect what happens there. The water has been utilized from, in years past, from my understanding, what I've learned, is the water is coming from Cedar Pond. They brought it into the factory to, for their industrial purposes, and it's not being touched before it gets to the factory. And that's why it's being, it's being reported to me, and again, we need to get all the test results on this and do what we need to in terms of our due diligence, but I'm told that the water is of good quality. So I hope that answers your question a little bit in terms of the actual water production. Nothing is on that side of Allen's Lane, and what I mean by that is, if you're going down Allen's Lane, all the right-hand side is not part of the sale. There's nothing over there now that affects our ability to go forward with what we are looking potentially to do in the future. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then just additional to that, I know there would be some current structure, there's some, I think there's, it looks like there were like retain, storage facilities that they have there. Is that going to be something that we would be included when we purchase it, that we would just have to remove, or would that be removed ahead of the sale?
Yeah, that would be part of the sale. We'd be purchasing, purchasing that. Some of those structures, potentially, we would continue to utilize, others we would look to demo and remove. So, yeah, those will be things we look to in the future, but we would be purchasing all the assets that are a part of that land.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, you know, I plan on, when it comes to before the council's supporting, you know, I do think it's important to do the due diligence period, just that it was an industrial use, industrial zoned, and, you know, there are railroad tracks there, and there's, you know, obviously a lot that was going in and coming out. So, that kind of testing, I think, is more than appropriate. You know, I think also, really importantly, is that the distribution, you know, there's a lot of grant money for something like this. So, we might find ourselves actually surprised that this might be something that would have a regional impact, and that regional impact would also help supplement any costs of actually building out the infrastructure that's going to be required. So, yep, I will, I plan on supporting this. I think if we didn't do this, and some sort of company came in, and that would somehow impede our access to this kind of water, we would really regret it at this point. So, I plan on supporting it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had additional questions that have already been touched upon regarding the future infrastructure improvements and costs, so the mayor has touched upon that. So I would just suggest, and commend you, Mayor, the transparent manner in which you've rolled this out to this point is really commendable, and I just suggest that you continue with the transparency as we approach the additional infrastructure costs and rolling that portion out. So I commend you for that and just encourage you to continue along that path. The residents are very open to this and are looking forward to it, and they know about it, and you've done a great job bringing that message to them, so I commend you for that. And I also want to congratulate you, Mayor. This is a bold decision that I believe will benefit the city of Peabody for generations to come, and I am 100% in support of the investment, the expenditure, and the promise. So, kudos to you, Mayor, on this. It's a great day for Peabody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Manning Martin. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. I do agree with Counselor Melville. I think it's great that there's language in this purchase and sale draft that has language to make sure that we are covered in case the unforeseen happens, that there is contamination and we can back out of this. But I agree with Counselor Turco, as well as Counselor Manning Martin, this is kind of monumental, this is forward-thinking, this is planning for the future, and this is an ideal step to put us in a great position moving forward infrastructurally. I would also recommend, again, on Counselor Turco's point, that you do meet with the DEP and find out what that process is to see what it would entail for us to increase that 3.3 water permit, just in case that we ever have the opportunity to utilize that. But this is absolutely a fantastic day for Peabody, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. Counselor Welham.
Thank you, Chairman McGinn. Just echoing the sentiments of many counselors, I think this is very forward-thinking, it'll have a huge impact on the community for years and years to come, and also provides the opportunity for us to possibly make some additional money off of, you know, selling this to access to other communities as well. So, again, I applaud you on your efforts so far. When this comes in front of the full council, I fully plan to support it. I did have just two points I wanted to touch on. I know Counselor Turco talked about cleaning up Goldwate Brook, you know, during the process once we acquire this. I think the other piece of it that I would be interested to, to make sure that we keep our mind on is the flood mitigation of Quail and Robin Road, and make sure that there's an opportunity to really mitigate the challenges that, I just think of Mr. Sotiropoulos in his backyard, cleaning up, you know, all the flood that's going by and not too far from. by, and not too far from Counselor Peach's parents. And if there's an opportunity to tie into all this new land and water that we'll acquire, I think that'll be, that'll be huge. I did have a quick question. You mentioned the train tracks that are on the property. Do those extend all the way to First Ave? And would that be part of the purchase? Would we have access to that whole thoroughfare?
Yes, we potentially could have access to that. The railroad line, though, is not owned, would not be owned by the City of Peabody. It's not owned by Rusolo. It was CSX, and I believe it was just transferred to a different group. But, no, that would not be, yes, we could potentially utilize it for recreational opportunities, walking trails, but it's not part of the sale.
All right, thank you. And again, just to echo everyone's sentiments, I think this is a great idea and fully plan to support it.
Thank you, Counselor. It's actually, was owned by Pan Am, now it's owned by CSX.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not to build your ego further, Mayor, but he's missing a Masco basketball game to be here, so you know it's important. But the, you know, I commend you and your team. You know, I think when, we all had a little panic when Rusolo announced they were closing. And I don't think we're through all that panic yet, but this is, this is certainly a positive thing for the city. And, and I truly think, you know, in, in 20, 30 years, this is going to be looked at as the best thing that, that's happened in the city in a very long time. So I, I plan to support it. My question is, I, I don't know if we've talked about it, or saw it in writing. I, I know the, the vote tonight is to approve, to move forward with the purchase and sale signature. As far as the funding goes, are we tying ourselves to a certain way to fund that dollar amount? Or will that come later? Is it kind of just come out of the general fund, and then Mike does his thing? And if, and if we choose to, to fund it through a different financial source, we would, we would take a vote on that later?
Thank you, Counselor. We would have additional information that would be forthcoming on that. However, I can say that we anticipate that primarily this would be funded through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a point of clarification, Counselor Peach. I think when the mayor answers in that fashion, and don't let me put words in your mouth, Mr. Mayor, but you, that's, Water and Sewer Enterprise would handle the debt service. We're, we're looking at a bond authorization this evening. Just want to make sure that's...
Exactly, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Any other counselors? Counselor Gould.
Sorry to come back to me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, can you talk just briefly about the water permits and who controls those, please?
Thank you, Counselor. So, yes, they, those are permits through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. They're a Massachusetts Water Management Act permit that's been active for Rusolo, like I said, for decades. It's allows for a withdrawal of 3.34 million gallons of water per day. Any changes, additions, which I think is a good idea to look at, that would have to go through the D E P. All water quality has to be tested, just like we do now at Winona Water Treatment Plant, at Coolidge Water Treatment Plant. We test on a daily basis. We submit all of the data to the D E P to make sure that we're meeting the clean water drinking standards, safe water drinking standards. So all of that, before we could potentially distribute again in the future, we would have to meet all those standards. But the permit comes to us, given us the authority and the authorization to take that water. But before it can be distributed, it would have to pass all the D E P requirements, meet all the requirements of the safe water drinking law, and go through all the testing.
In the decision on the permit, increase or, I mean, how, how do we increase the gallons, the capacity?
I'm not too familiar with that process yet. That is something I can look at and report back, but it would go through the D E P. They would determine based upon the quality, not only the quality, but probably more importantly, the quantity of water that's available.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I also think this is a potentially historic day, and I'm very excited about this opportunity. There's many other communities around us that do not have enough water for their own growth. So this is a really great futuristic move. And I say all that before I ask this question. I think Counselor Turco touched upon it, would be the, tonight we're talking about a $25 million bond request. I'm curious as to if you can ballpark the infrastructure cost that would be required to turn that water into drinkable water that we could use. I know it's difficult, because there could be some grants available, but is there some sort of ballpark number for that infrastructure cost? As, and just to temper, or just to set expectations, once, assuming everything is a go and we pass all our tests, what kind of timeframe are we talking about, you know, to get drinkable water from this new water source? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I think that, the last question that you mentioned, or that you brought up, I think that has to be determined by us. That'll be, I think, anticipate that we would have meetings to determine when the right time is to make that additional investment in infrastructure, to determine when we want to do that, how we want to do that. The costs can range, from what I'm being told now. And you'll see in the report, there was mentions of, if we were to construct a full water treatment facility, which is possibility is something we would have to look at, that could be 20 to 25 million dollars with the infrastructure necessary and the piping. There might be other opportunities we may have to connect, again, to our Walsh Water Treatment Facility in South Peabody. That might be at a lesser cost than that. There would probably have to be some upgrades so that that facility can handle the capacity of water, the additional capacity. But I think that we haven't really kind of worked out all those numbers yet and ideas yet. But I think that's going to be collectively what we decide. I think this is the first step to purchase it, so we have the, we have the ability to start planning for the future. We have the permit in place, and then it's just a matter of how we want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Higgins. Any other counselors? Counselor Gould? Thank you. I'm, I'm going to pulse Zoom again to see if anybody is on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter. Clerk has advised me that there is not. And one last call for anybody here in the audience. Seeing none. Mr. Mayor, for my part, shouldn't be no surprise to you, I've been supportive of this from day one. I have heard this put a lot of different ways by my fellow counselors here tonight in terms of historic. I think Counselor Gould went so far as to say, you know, people go to war over, over water rights. He's right about that. It is a, a very significant and important acquisition. You, you said it multiple times, that it's once in a lifetime. It's, I, I believe that is absolutely correct. It may be, it may actually come up less frequently than that, even frankly. I'm not sure there would ever be another opportunity this good to help secure our, the future of our water supply in Peabody, and do so in a way that, you know, we're, we're, we're getting some guidance that, that the present value analysis of this shows that it's, you know, over the very long run, it is a financially superior alternative to long-term dependence over the M W R A. But it's a, it's, it's a gutsy move on your part. You know, chances are, you may not see the results of this in your, in your term, potentially. And there aren't, there are a number of folks that probably would be in your position that, for that reason, might not be willing to, to make an investment like this. But I, I applaud you from day one on this, from, you know, for taking the long view, and truly, I believe, acting in what is in the, the long-term best interest of, of the residents of the City of Peabody. Again, I'm 100% supportive of this, and realize that what you have before us for P and S is just a draft. I spotted a few things in there. I'm not going to go into those tonight, because it's a draft, and I'll, I'll share a couple of comments with the city solicitor. And, again, but at this point, I'd like to go to Counselor Gould for a motion. And we're, we're looking for two motions this evening. Again, one is to authorize, I'll give you the motion. The first motion that I would entertain is to move to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Rusolo Peabody, Inc. for approximately 164.58 acres of land. A draft of such purchase and sale agreement is attached to a communication from his honor, the mayor, dated January 17th, 2025.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, you heard the motion from Counselor Gould. On the motion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counselor Turco.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one question. At this point, do we substitute the Page Six that the mayor had submitted to us into, to, with, to change over from the Page Six that's currently in the document, since they're different?
Mr. Mayor, was that excerpt from the draft? Or, there was similar language in the draft. Is that, were you just highlighting that page, or were you, or was that a revision to the draft?
Thank you. That, that was some additional language that, or some wording, additional wording that we did put forward, the provision. The, in the original draft that I sent you, there is some language to that effect. That's a little bit more in detail. I just wanted to provide that to you to show you that there's going to be opt-out opportunities for us in the future. I think it could be added to the, the draft that you currently have. But there's, there's been, and there will be some further negotiations on that P and S purchase and sale agreement before it's finalized and ready for signature.
So I'd modify the motion to include the revised language to Section 5.1.9 provided by his honor, the mayor.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you heard the motion from Counselor Gould as modified. On the motion, additionally on the motion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next item on the agenda, transfer of funds, south and west school roofs, an amount of $75,000. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I know it's, we're a little behind. I'm going to be very brief on this, but certainly can give any further information if you would like. But I think all of you are familiar with the process here with the Mass School Building Authority. We are moving forward and seeking $75,000 to do some work in terms of investigation and research for the west and south elementary school new roofs. This is a step in the process that's required in order to move forward with the study. Any, if we do decide to move forward with the actual funding of the project, that would come back to all of you for a vote and a full presentation. This is just a step in the process to, to look at those roofs, and make some determinations as to the need and the cost. And then if we were to move forward, again, we would come back to all of you. Can you certainly give further detail? But the west and south school, I think all of you are very familiar with those buildings. This is just an attempt to try to extend the life of those buildings, putting in some new roof. Both of those schools have dealt with leaking roofs at times, and this is part of the accelerated repair program with the MSBA that had put on hold for a couple of years. Accelerated repair programs for roofs, windows, boilers, things of that nature. And we wanted to take an opportunity to look at this and see if this makes sense to us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions from the committee? Questions from other counselors? Counselor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to transfer from bond premiums reserved for projects, account number 270000033015, and the amount of $75,000 to account south and west school roofs, account number 3000000358862025, again, in the amount of $75,000. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselors, hear the motion by Counselor Gould. On the motion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Heard the motion. All in favor and opposed as a vote. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Counselor, for the support.